This is the meeting of the Howard's Planning Board for October 26, 2017. Anybody that would like to record or tape this is required by law to notify the chair that they're going to. So if you're turning your tape recorder on, gentlemen, don't get caught. The first item on the agenda tonight is PB 2008-op 3, Board Signatures for Partial Covenant Release Belmont Estates. Ellie?
Yep, so it's your first item in your packet. And they're requesting three lots of Belmont Estates to be released from the covenant. The engineering department went out and took a look at the road and is fine with the three lots being released because we will have two lots that remain under covenant to complete the rest of the work. That would be sufficient to complete the rest of the work. So my recommendation is along the same lines as the town engineer is to the planning board to release the three lots that are requested.
Any...
Just one question. While I go along with Ellie's recommendation to, you know, release the lots in accordance with the recommendation of our town engineering department, my only question to the applicant would be, do you have any concept as to whether, when you're going to be finishing the work?
Well, actually, it's a good question. I have recently sold, I only have one lot left. It's a cul-de-sac, and I actually have two very interested parties. So I'm trying to be kind to everyone in the development and just wrap everything up. We already loomed the sides of the road. We're doing the final coat Saturday. And what I'd like to do before the end of the year is wrap up the road to the final lumen seed, get seed down, and just minimize the... This is modular construction. So we get the foundations start on Lot 9 and 10, and that's just going to leave one lot left. We're on Q to be wrapped up early spring. So this whole development can be, these people, all houses can be done by June. Doing their final landscaping.
I assume you would then be coming back to us in the spring for the release of the...
The release of the other two. Probably before the spring. Because it's, we're already, so I have two, I only have one lot left. I have two, we're actually, they're already engineered. I'm working with Dan Ojala. In fact, I just, he's a little behind. I've got to get the site plans done. Order those houses, I got them in a week. Those houses will be coming in January. And then it's about a 12-week button up for me. So it's January, February, March, April, early spring. I would be probably looking for release around then. I got, there's natural gas in the development. They're coming in end of November. The final electric, you know, underground service is supposed to happen next week, the week after. Yeah, it's going to be like a two-step process. Get some of the lumen seed done and button up the shoulders of the road. Whether I just get some seed down and get it stabilized, knowing that this spring we're going to do another, like, clean pass and wrap it up because we would have those other, the constructions going on for the other two houses. But we're pretty, it's very minimally invasive how we build. We do a lot in Lexington, Needham, and Newton and Town. It's not traditional construction. We have lumber drops and piles of lumber and even drywall trucks come in. Once the modular units are set, which, by the way, it's done by a big, heavy crane, but these cranes are designed to drive on regular roads, and they have multiple tires. And the mods come in, and they have the trailers for the mods. Each mod has 10 to 12 tires. So it's really less impact, and it's one busy day after that, we're done. So the key, the most, the only messy thing that I have going on right now is the concrete to get those foundations in soon.
Okay, thank you. Joe, who's your manufacturer?
XL Homes down in Pennsylvania.
I live in a modular.
Oh, yeah, so they're with Champion bought them out. They went, there was about a three-year turmoil. I was with Epic Homes in New Hampshire, Kaiser in Maine, and XL. And XL Liverpool, Pennsylvania. It was like the workmanship down there. I always had a, always leaned towards them. And they got bought out by some equity-owned partners who bought out Epic and Kaiser, and they extracted monies, and they went out of business. But Champion's, Champion purchased them, they're doing well.
My outfit was way up in Quebec.
Boston?
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know those guys.
And...
Problem is freight.
Yeah, freight and also the change in the dollar, you know?
Exactly, there you go, yeah. The Amish have a certain mentality that is, is what I like. If you go to the factory, they ride their bike to work. When you look from above, the whole construction processes, it's 20% less waste because the product comes in on train.
It's all built on a line.
Comes right in, there's no going on a train, off a train, on a truck, off a truck, to the lumberyard. So you have that going on, you have the optimization of the parts. Like a four-by-eight sheet of plywood, the cutoff's not in a dumpster, it goes on to the next. They're building mods, they're not building a house. They think of it as, my job is to build this mod. But the workmanship in Pennsylvania is...
Right. David?
How is the binder course being corrected?
Good question. We're, I was just talking to Dan because Dan Ojala's taking course. So I don't know if you guys know. So I had, we started this road, I talked to Lawrence Lynch, he was supposed to do it. I contracted with him. I did have one investor in the property. We bought it, and he said, oh, can you help this guy out and use those guys? Asphalt Solutions, who did a driveway for me in Kootuwa. And I said, yes. We put them in there. My background's civil engineering. It was one day of paving. We realized right away, we've got shortcomings here, and I had to navigate my way out of that. So I called Lynch back, and Rick LeClaire agreed to help me out. And basically what they did is they, it was required, we're supposed to have a two-inch binder course, one inch and a half top course. That, the machine he had, he's fine on the straight edge, but on the turn and on the cul-de-sac, he didn't put, he didn't lay enough down. It's down, it's like about an inch. So I went to Aggregate Industries, got the slips, the tonnage that was used. Met with Dan, we did the quick math, and he's, it was 76 ton short. So, yeah, and I left an open check. There was no excuse for it. It was just, we can't figure it out. On top of that, the crown on the bind, on the existing, if you've been out there, is not what was supposed to be. So on the turn and on the cul-de-sac, we're going to discount what's there completely. So we know, we did the math with Dan Ojala. He's, Dan's going to, supposed to paint, you know, grade, regrade it. So we're going to pull up the catch basins on the corner. There's four catch basins. We've got to pull those back up. I'm not worried about the lumen seed, too much lumen over there. We already dumped extra lumen on the side, and we're just going to bring that up. So basically, on the turn and the other, the asphalt's there that is going to be considered part of the base.
You didn't have to remove it?
No, it doesn't make, you don't have to remove it. It's part of the base. We had a big roller, everything was done right. It's just that...
It's thin.
What it was is, when he has his machine, when he was making the turn, he didn't have enough in the box. It was crazy that it happened. I was pulling my hair out.
Sorry, you had to go through that?
Yeah, it's, so it was nice enough for Rick LeClaire to come back after all that. He was a big-hearted guy to...
Thank you.
And this is probably an echo of what Joe asked. I worked on some, actually myself, for some modular homes that came out of Ontario. And we did another one that came out of Pennsylvania. There was a little difference, but not that much. And the value of the dollar made it all, I've got to tell you, made it all that much different.
Come from up north.
Yeah, because you're, you know, you're paying in 72-cent dollars.
We're, yeah, I find...
And they were phenomenal. They were, did exactly what they were supposed to do.
I'm paying freight. I mean, I'm probably $32,000 in freight on an average colonial to get it up this way. But it's still, you're still ahead, and your soft costs has shrank, shrunk way down.
Plus, you've got to pay all those troopers and...
Yeah, 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 you want, those are your best friends, though. Because we did one in Housneck, they just, right through lights and everything.
Housneck and Quincy?
Yeah, yeah, we did one right in the water. We set a house two days before Sandy. We set a house on the water in Housneck. And then I just put, I had my guys wrap it with, the whole house with Tyvek, one extra layer. And we were siding a few days, I don't know if you remember that storm, like, three days later, it wasn't bad out. And that shut down a lot of other builders, so I mean, it's...
There's, there's probably some difference in cost, but it's minimal. But in terms of your cost per square foot, it's dramatically cheaper than banging them up stick by stick, isn't it?
Absolutely, yeah. It's, I'm about $85 to $90 a square foot.
Cheaper or total?
Total cost, delivered. Drywall studs, no, I do finish flooring on-site, siding on-site. But it goes beyond that. It's when you look from the green standpoint, you're not throwing stuff in the dumpster. I don't have dumpsters, I have dump trailers, small little dump trailers. So the bulk of the work is done, and there's no settling, it's all under a roof.
Good, I have...
Moisture's my biggest enemy as a builder, of all builders, moisture is the enemy today. Especially down here.
Now, when, roughly, when are you going to be putting these in?
Well, right now, I got a, looking at January deliveries for two, I have three lots left.
Yep.
And looking at January, January deliveries on those, January, February. And the third lot is not sold yet, but we have, I actually have offers. I was hoping, I'm trying to keep it eclectic. I've got a ranch, I've got a colonial, I have five-bedroom, another ranch, like a cave. And I have this farmhouse that I want to do, but the buyers, the two buyers that I have aren't, that's not what they want, so I'm trying to...
But could you do me a favor, not that, if you, remember, could you give Ellie a call about a week ahead of time and tell her when they're coming?
Absolutely, yeah, yeah, yeah. Do you have a card?
Yeah, I can get it for you.
We're nosy, we won't watch, if you don't mind.
By, you know, state code, I'm supposed to give 48 hours. I know, I called Jay Briggs, you know, big building inspector.
I'm sure the police will know all about it as soon as they come to Howard's.
You'll see them coming.
But, yeah, give Ellie a call a week ahead of time, you know, or whatever, so we get a little notice and we can, you know, go out there and be nosy.
I buy a bunch of pizza from local, it's a barn raising. I try to keep it fun. It's one day, one day's that.
I've seen it, it's phenomenal to watch.
My set crew's from Maine, they've been doing, that's all he does his whole life.
Do you know that La Pointe also uses a set crew from Maine?
La Pointe is a, yeah, he did like a pretty big development down here, right?
He's still at it.
Kevin Whitney, Modset.
Yeah. Good. So anybody else have any questions? Mary, you've been officiously quiet.
I was, I was going to ask about the road, so I'm good. He answered the question on the binder, thank you.
That's good, the road thing was embarrassing. I went to school for civil engineering, and we talked about it, we were ready for it, and then when it came down, you know, I studied, went over the plans, everything. And I'm worried about it because I'm, with the crane, the mod, you know, I'm bringing equipment over it, and...
We're going to have Jim out there with a Binkleman beam, making sure it's done right.
Yeah, I will say Sammy Speakman did a good job with the base. He took it all the way there, it was just a matter of paving, everything was perfect. And the guy, Asphalt Solutions, did a great job fine-grading, and then he just dropped the ball.
Okay, if there's no other questions, why don't we...
Move to close the public hearing.
It's been moved.
Seconded.
And seconded. Any discussion? No discussion, all in favor?
A point of order, though, this was not a public hearing, this was under a public meeting.
Move to close the public meeting.
I don't think we, I don't think we have to.
I don't move anything. I make a motion to release the covenant.
Yeah, I think that's the motion that's...
On lots 7, 8, and 9.
Okay.
Thanks, guys.
I'll second it again.
It's been moved and seconded. For the second motion, we don't, the meeting, the public hearing or the public meeting are not closed, and since they were never opened, but we move to release the covenant.
On lots 7, 8, and 9.
On lots 7, 8, and 9. Any discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carrie?
I'm sorry, you seconded, Mary?
Jim did. He beat me to it, Ellie.
Not by much.
Is there any follow-up on my end?
Yep, so I just have to have the board sign.
Hepa Rhodi pizza.
If you want to do it now, we can do it after, and I can give...
Run it around the table. Yeah.
I have a blue pen.
XL Homes.
XL Homes, all right.
Want one? I got a good guy down there. So my business is hybrid home, and I take control. Everything, everything I do... If you just order a module home, you're going to get their piece.
Okay. While we're, there we go, while we're signing this, we're moving on to an informal discussion with Paul and Michelle, the Zalizonas, Chair of, oh, well, Bill's not here. Crowell, to grant a special permit as an accessory structure. This is what you're here for, right?
Yes, sir.
Structure with bedrooms, detached two-story structure. The property is located at 19 Schoolhouse Road Parcel, MAP 14 Parcel T7A. Letter to request modification of the detached structure. Ellie?
So the application, the planning board had previously approved the application for an accessory structure with bedrooms in May 23rd, 2017. But the applicant wishes to amend the application without the need to hold a formal public hearing or actually amend the application formally. So he's hoping he can just do it through plans. My recommendation to the board is just to consider the fact that when the public hearing was held at the beginning, the plans were different than what would potentially be built now. So that's just my, a thought that I'd like the board to consider as they're considering the applicant's request.
Excuse me, sir, do you want us to wait for Mr. Crowell? Do you expect...
No, I decided to save a few dollars, and Bill said I can come on my own, so...
Okay.
Actually, yeah, let me reverse that. Bill said I was come out, I could come on my own, so...
Threw you under the bus, did he?
It was through, it was one of his administrators, too, so I didn't even get it personally.
It's from the neighbors.
Okay. So...
My thought.
Anyone have any questions? David, go ahead.
Yeah, Larry, I think we should let the applicant make a presentation first as to what he's proposing with the amendment before we open it up to discussion.
Thank you. So my wife and I, Michelle is home with the kids, but my wife and I, when we came to the zoning board, I mean, the planning board with, I'm sorry. We went to the zoning board with Bill for our 50 Davis Lane project, which was three homes on the lot, and the back house needed to be torn down. We got our builder to do a two-story plan for us, and it worked well in that neighborhood. And then when we bought 19 Schoolhouse and had that site plan approved, we used the same type of mentality in house, and that's what we got approved by this board a few months back. And that house is two stories, and kind of upon further review, my wife and I, in finishing the renovations on the original house, which was the Apostles' house, the owners of the Sword and Shield, and the lines of that house, we came to the kind of opinion that the two-story house might not look right in that setting because you have the fence around it, you have the public parking lot, you have, even though it's a two-story house, it's really a short second story on the Apostles' original house, and it's kind of got some interesting lines to it which match this one story. So we decided to go back to our architect and have him redraw it as a one-story house that had more of the lines like the Apostles' house. Obviously, we're saving some money because we're not going to the second floor, but we just think it flows better with the way the property is laid out there. This is less square footage, but it is a little bit wider footprint. And Dan Carrato from Moran, you know, redid the site plan, and it's still of all legal setbacks, et cetera. So that, that is why, a long story of why we want to go to this style house with respect to this particular property.
Okay, Kim.
Okay, I think my feeling is that since our, correct me if I'm wrong, Ellie, and do you want to have Ellie's comments first before we open it up to the board?
That'd be a good idea.
So I, you know, I just made, I just made my comments before, too. Just, I want the board to consider the public in this. I know that we had one comment at the public hearing that was concerned about loud noise because this will be an additional unit there. So I just want, you know, the board to consider that as a reason why potentially we should have another public hearing for this, for the modification. But I thought it was the board's decision to make, that's why I brought it to the board to review.
Okay.
Okay, yeah, I mean, I think I agree with Ellie in the sense that our original approval of the use special permit was granted, you know, and we had a public hearing for that. I think in order to amend that approval, we have to go back and have another public hearing. Now, basically, yeah, from my point of view, taking a look at your plans, I have no problem with what you're trying to do. But I think both in order to be fair to the public and to stick with the procedures of planning board, I would recommend that, you know, that we deal with this through a public hearing process.
Okay, if I, could I ask a question of the board? If I go back to the board and somehow this plan gets denied, do I still get to build the other house?
Well, again, I think that would be a question that...
That's what I'm, that's the one, number one thing I'm worried about.
I mean, you have approval to build the other house.
Right.
What you're asking for is an amendment to that approval.
Yes, yes.
If we don't approve the amendment, then it would be my opinion that the basic approval stays.
Tell them please, Joe.
I agree.
I agree. Ellie?
Yeah, all around.
I have a question.
Go ahead. On your plan, and we'll look at it when we hold the hearing, but it shows a, an existing house on the back of the lot.
Yes.
Is that still there?
Yes, that's the Apostles' original house that we completely renovated, and it's all done now, and, you know, it's...
What's the house, the white house to the left as you face the lot?
There's only one house on this lot. This lot is on the side of the Mad Minnow.
I know.
That is the house, I think, Joe.
So if you want to point, I don't know if I have the air...
This is that, I'm looking at that.
Where it says, right here?
Existing house is the white one?
I think that's the, I think that's the Apostle House.
In my head, I'm looking, I don't know if it was to the left, but I'm not...
It is, because this is, the street's over here.
Oh, I see, yeah, all right.
Turn it so that news up here on the...
That's it, right there.
So that's the street.
That's the old house, though, I mean, the old roof.
Right.
David?
Yeah, I, I'm in agreement with Jim. This is not just a minor change, this is a substantial change.
Of course, yes.
And I think the neighbors have the right to, you know, go through the process to say if they have any... You know, I would not expect the neighbors to, the neighbors would probably like this better than a two-story house because it's, it uses their look at the moon.
Exactly, exactly.
But I think we need to go through the process, my view.
And one last question. So the filing for that is, is it passed for this month? I mean, obviously for October. So it would file in November to get on to December?
Yeah, so the next one would be December 12.
The next hearing?
The next hearing date.
Okay.
I can look and see if we have noticed for the end of November yet. That could be a possibility, but definitely December 12.
Okay, no problem.
I'll look, I'll look tomorrow and let you know.
And then that's the 12 copies and all that, 14, oh, yeah, we'll get all that done, okay.
And I think you've listened to everybody, and in fairness to the neighbors, I think they might, like, like was mentioned, probably nobody will have any concerns, but it's fair to them that they see it.
I totally understand, absolutely.
Good.
I think you have a bigger issue if somebody complains that the public hearing didn't happen and they appeal it. Then if you just hold the public hearing and then you have a...
We were in the dumper, if we don't hold...
Well, not only are we in the dumper, but he may be in the dumper because...
For the first approval.
If somebody really objects and...
An appeal.
An appeal.
Oh, no problem.
And you've already gone and built upon our lack of action or whatever.
No problem.
Then you're in trouble, you're in trouble also. So I think it's safer for you also if you do...
Get the dimensions and have the previous guy build it for you in Pennsylvania.
I agree. That gives me a little more time. But I do want to get it done, I'll get it done by, by June, I'm not worried about it, but if we get it approved.
Okay.
But this will look better. And I'll bring in, maybe I'll do some renderings to, you know, to give to the board.
That would be great, yeah.
Aside from just this thing.
That would be great.
Good, so we'll see you in November if you're lucky, and December...
Definitely.
We think that November's deadline is past, you think?
I think it's, I want to say...
We'll never be able to put that bill, maybe, we'll see, anyway. Thank you very much.
I have to look at the sheet, I can't remember.
Should I call tomorrow, or...
Yeah, give me a call tomorrow.
Will do, Ellie.
But, you know.
I actually took Mark's name down here, if that's all right. Okay.
And tell Bill you did just fine.
Sorry?
Tell Bill you did just fine.
Yeah. No worries.
David?
I'd like whoever last signed the covenant release to return...
My pen.
Her pen, Ellie's pen, because she stole mine.
I thought it was a nice pen.
Thank you.
She was a crumpet, Ellie, don't have pencils.
Thanks, Joe.
Everybody else has been in the bag.
What did you do today? We know what you did today.
No, but the hearing was last night.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks for coming in. The next item on the agenda. Advisory opinions for the Board of Appeal, October 23rd, 2017. Which says to me it's already been held, Mr. Chairman. Today's the 26th. Well, I'm sorry, October 23rd? That being the case, I guess we don't have to worry too much about that.
Is that date correct?
So we need comments by October 23rd, but the meeting is on the 25th, which was yesterday.
Which was yesterday.
Yesterday, so never mind.
We missed it because of the last, not having the last meeting.
We did, I'm sorry about that. I don't think there was anything that the planning board wanted to comment on anyway.
No, not now.
Yeah, no, no.
Don't even bother looking.
This says, this says reschedule to 25th. Oh, we're on the 26th, hello?
That was yesterday.
Oh, my God.
Well, moving on.
I had some interest in that DeLuise thing, and...
Yeah. Mr. DeLuise is back?
Well, he never went in place.
Thought he might have been going someplace special, but...
No.
This is the training workshop for March of 2018? Am I reading that right? Next item on the agenda, oh, yeah, Citizens Planner Training at Holy Cross, next March.
It's a lovely venue.
It is, and on St. Patrick's Day, too.
It's a good place to be. You will find lots of grain there.
However, if anybody would like to attend that, I think Ellie or Elaine would like to know. Is that the procedure?
Yep, that's procedure. And on the back of that flyer, there's Fall 2017 Courses, and there's some that are local. So if you want to take a look at that, and again, if you, anyone wants to attend, just let us know and we'll sign you up.
Okay, Northampton looks like fun.
There is one, where was that?
November 1st, on Creating Master Plans.
Yep, but I think that's far away.
That's in Worcester.
From Worcester, not that far.
It's not that far.
Oh, Introduction to Subdivision Control Law, N A N R, it's number 11. That's in Worcester. It's on 11-117. That was the closest. But let us know if you want to go, and we can sign you up.
Excuse me, Ellie?
Yeah.
On the one on Creating Master Plans, would it be possible to contact them and see if we could get whatever information they passed out?
I'm sure.
Because the information they passed out may be thorough enough so that we could just read through it instead of driving all the way to Worcester. Because the information they passed out may be thorough enough so that we could just read through it instead of driving all the way to Worcester.
I mean, that, if you go to Worcester, you know, we're not, we're not back until midnight or later.
Yeah, because it gets done at 8:30 and Worcester, depending on how fast you drive, it's between two and two and a half hours.
Am I looking at the right one? This says Lowell.
I think there might be a few.
On November 1st?
November 13th is Lowell.
Yeah, Creating Master Plans, number nine. Yeah, Lowell's even further than Worcester.
Yeah, Worcester's better than Lowell.
We could take the train to Lowell.
We could take the train to Worcester.
Excuse me.
Guaranteed, we'll never get home.
Yeah, I mean, you could get there, but you can't get back.
Can't get home?
But, yeah, if you could check and see if we could get the, they hand us some of the information on that one. That might be helpful for another item we have on the agenda tonight.
Yeah.
If not, then, well, I'm not completely happy about going all the way to Worcester. It might be, it might be good to have at least one of us go to that, but let's see if we can get the information first.
Yeah.
I'm sure the town lets you sleep over, don't they?
Oh, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, get an extra dorm bunk at the EPI.
Also, though, they might have something at the annual conference at Holy Cross on the 17th in 2018. 2018 is right around the corner.
Yeah, but that's also, Holy Cross is.
I know, but it's, it's during the day.
As opposed to being a night.
It's a whole day, yeah.
Excuse me.
From my remembering.
Well, if you could check and see if we could get the, the information, and we may have to pay for the information.
Yeah.
But that might be easier than having anybody drive to Worcester and.
This is on the master plan you're talking about?
Yeah, creating the master plan.
Okay, the next item, so if anybody is interested, Ally could check on a couple of those dates with them and see if we can maybe get the information. But, you know, like Jim, I don't relish the idea of a six-hour round trip for an hour and a half of, some of them they could mail to us. Or, you know, send us the, electronically send us the PowerPoint presentation.
Yeah, I mean, that might be.
Maybe they'll let you Skype in for a fee.
That may be another option. If, if we could somehow electronically, you know, key into it. And then maybe we could, if that's possible, then maybe we could do it someplace here at Town Hall. And that would allow, you know, maybe a few of us who were interested to sit in and watch it electronically.
Yeah.
So if you could check on those things.
Yeah, I'll follow up and see.
Okay. The next item on the agenda are the minutes for.
Drop the minutes of September.
Wait a minute, wait a minute.
We have one.
Wait a minute, before we do that there, Mr. McParland, Mr. Harris has a few things he'd like to bring up about the minutes.
Okay, sorry about that.
You still have them?
Yeah, I got them.
Mine.
I'll give them back to.
I didn't take yours.
No, did you give them back?
Yep.
Here, here.
No, he wants his, well, mine have the, oh, here they are.
Larry, we could actually let Joe make his motion and then have David give his comments during the discussion.
Oh, yeah, on the, on the minutes for September 26th. On the. Two, three, fourth page. Third paragraph, Mr. McCarroll asked what was to be built. Mr. McGee said the house and the straightening of lots that he is moving next door. I'm, I had a little trouble understanding what that meant. It may have meant, been clear in the context of the meeting, but how to straighten a lot.
Figure it out.
All I did is ask the question.
Um, what, David?
I'm not responsible for the answer.
And there's a couple of, there's a couple of name reversals, so.
James Brophy is, should be Lawrence Brophy.
I would think so. My father would appreciate that.
And the same thing on the following page, there's a couple of James Brophies. You can have these.
Yes, I will, thank you.
Okay, so with those, with those.
Corrected and.
We'll change it.
On the last page, Mr. Harris said he had questions whether or not painting results in compliance. I frequently say things don't, don't make sense, but I like to correct them afterwards and I don't know how to correct that one.
All right, I will look at those two, or a few things.
Okay. Okay. And I think there's something on the minutes for the September 12th meeting, too, which we should have gone through first. But on the last page at the top, it says one full time and two alternate positions. I think just delete the time.
Yeah, because it's.
Where are you there? Oh, up at the top, one full ti, I see.
One full, yeah.
I thought they're all full time, but just.
Yeah, that's true.
So what, what goes out of there?
Just take the word time out.
Just to be more, more specific.
Okay, so those, those minutes are approved as amended.
Yep.
You don't want a motion?
Move to, to approve them as amended.
Second.
It moved and seconded. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed, carried, thank you. The next item on the agenda. The Port Village District Bylaw. First, Ally?
Okay. So this is one of the planning board's priorities to review this. Right now, we have the village commercial, commercial overlay district in Harwich Port. And this amendment basically just makes what was in the village commercial overlay district the mandatory, so the underlying zoning, with a few changes, so we can go through those. I hope everyone's had a chance to read them, but we can go through them point by point. I think maybe the use regulations, so Table 1, Use Regulations, those are, I think, more of what we have to go through to see what would be allowed in the zone as permitted or special per, permit, or what would not be allowed in the zone.
Okay, Larry?
True.
Yeah, as you all may remember, this came about, you know, as part of our discussions on the Cumberland Farms issue. And in the Cumberland Farms issue, you know, if you remember, we had imposed the restrictions of the village overlay district upon Cumberland Farms. Cumberland Farms took umbrance to that and sued the town.
And sued us.
Yeah, and sued us and brought us to court. Through the discovery process, it was discovered that when the overlay district zoning went to town meeting, the context of it was that it was to be voluntary instead of mandatory. In which case, then the town, you know, and, you know, David Spitz and myself and the planning board and Chris Clark, sat down and talked with Cumberland Farms and we agreed that the zoning should be under the underlying zoning for the Harwich Port area, not the village overlay district. And we were able to negotiate with Cumberland Farms on some of the issues of appearance of the building. And I think Cumberland Farms was very minimal to working with the town on that. However, well, there are additional vacant lots in the Harwich Port area. And it is felt that the planning board should move to make the village overlay district requirements, the zoning for the Harwich Port district as shown, the district being shown on the plan that Ally has attached in the handout. Basically, what this does is it changes some of the dimensional requirements. It sort of formalizes the intent of the overlay district of enforcing the historic development patterns of Harwich Port in which buildings are closer to the street, closer together, closer to becoming a commercial village. And then also reviews, as Ally had mentioned, the allowed uses in this area. So I think the two things that need to be looked at are the revised dimensional requirements. And some of them are exactly the same as where in the village overlay district. Some of them were exactly the same as that, what were in the underlying zoning for Harwich Port. But then also, as Ally pointed out, the, the use regulations that Ally has attached for this district. And you'll see in looking at the use regulations, there were some question marks. And those were areas where both Ally and I felt in reviewing this that we needed the input of additional board members in order to decide how to proceed. In that I don't think either of us were that strong one way or the other. But we felt that the board should be consulted, you know, where the questions are and also allowed to review all the other uses to see whether or not they'd be in agreement before we took this proposed zoning, the next step.
Okay. Anyone else? Joe, David? Nobody's in complete agreement, Jim?
If we are in complete agreement, Ally, could you just define for the entire board what the next? At first, yeah, I mean, I think we need to fill in the question marks. And if the board doesn't feel they want to do that tonight, I mean, I think, you know, Ally and I could just sit down and fill in the question marks. Or Ally could fill them in and then just get them out to the board members. But Ally, could you fill us in on what would be the next step in processing this amendment?
Yep, so the next step would be if, if and when the board agrees to the amendment and the specifics in the amendment, it would be sent to the Board of Selectmen for their review, basically, and then we'd have to hold a public hearing on it.
Okay, and that public hearing would be prior to our officially voting to approve.
And certainly prior to the town meeting.
Yeah, and, and then it has to go to town meeting and it also, it has to be approved by town meeting by a two-thirds vote. And then also go to the Attorney General's office in Boston for approval. So, I mean, I think the discussion tonight, if the board is substantially in agreement with this, I don't think we need a formal vote tonight, but we need a consensus of the board in order to direct Ally to take this to the next step.
So.
Mary, go ahead.
I would think we'd want to, as a board, make a vote that recommends to the Board of Selectmen that, that we're recommending this change, or we're, we're making at least some, recommending that they look at it.
We have always done that in the past.
Right, so.
I, I think procedurally, I believe that we would have the public hearing, then vote after the public hearing.
We would vote on approval of it after the public hea, hearing. But that's not to forward to the Board of Selectmen, that's to forward to town meeting. So what Ally's saying is that we need to get, run this by the Board of Selectmen before we even schedule a public hearing.
I would have thought we'd recommend to the Board of Selectmen, have the Board of Selectmen take the vote, take whatever vote they take. Then we would, it would be sent back to the planning board for a public hearing. And then once our public hearing, we take a vote after a public hearing. And then that's the, that's when it gets, goes to town meeting. That's what I would have thought.
Yes.
Could be wrong.
Is the Board of Selectmen, is that an obligatory vote?
According to zoning law, the Board of Selectmen does not have to vote on it prior to going to town meeting. I think viewing the local situation, I think what Ally is saying is it is advisable to make sure that the Board of Selectmen is not, does not object to this before we push it any further.
And I think that Mass General technically says that you have to send it to the Board of Selectmen. They have 12 days to respond to us. I think that's how many days.
They could just say no objection.
Potentially, yeah.
The map?
Yep.
I'm particularly interested, because my house is right there. Where it, see where it is over here? Do I assume that that purple, which is C V, runs all the way over to the red? You just didn't do that?
So I, let me get to the zoning map quickly in here so I can just confirm. But it would really just be the location where the existing overlay district is now. We weren't proposing to make any changes. So where the overlay district exists currently, that's where this new zoning district would be. So we wouldn't be expanding the footprint of the district, nothing like that, to make it just eat, you know, simpler. Let me just confirm.
And that was correct, Ally. And so that would be the area outlined in red on this plan that you were.
Yeah, I would like to make a better map to just specifically, but it's the area outlined in red.
Yeah, so Joe, I think your ass is outside of that area.
It is.
Oh, it is. No, 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 I, I, I know that. I just want to make sure. The other question I have is on the other end of it. It's basically, looks like a half a dozen lots beyond where CVS and so forth is. Those, those, you got, they're in purple, but they're not outlined in red.
Yep, so the red, to my understanding, is where the Camilla, Village Commercial Overlay District is. The purple is the Commercial Village District, which is our underlying zoning there. And it goes up to those houses beyond, you know, CVS and Dunkin' Donuts there.
Yeah.
So that's the, you know, the difference.
So it's, where it's purple but not red, it's Commercial Village.
Right.
Where it's red, it's.
You have the overlay.
Commercial Village Overlay.
Overlay District on top of that.
How is the border of the Commercial Village defined? Is it a certain distance from the center line on 28 or?
So it's defined in the code. It talks about the specific locations and we also have a map in here. So those things would have to be amended if we were to go forward with this.
But is it, is it a defined line?
It's a defined line.
And how is it measured?
Yeah, so it talks about the exact location. Let me see, hold on, I'll tell you.
It's all right, if, you know, I'll take your word for it. I just was curious as to how you define it.
It's good to know this.
At this scale, it's a little hard to.
Yeah, it's very difficult to see. I, I would like to make a new map.
My question, I'm assuming the Ps are permitted and the Ss are special permits?
Yeah, and the dashes, it's not permitted in the district.
Dashes are not permitted.
And the question marks are questions.
And looking at, still at the map, at the tail end there, which I previously talked about, it looks like you've got CVS on here as being CH1. And all of them, Dunkin' Donuts, all those stores along that, that side of that, of that shopping center are not in purple. Is there a reason?
Yeah, that's the existing.
Not the existing zoning.
Underlying zoning in that area.
So it's CH1?
C V.
That's the existing zoning, Joe.
No, CH1.
The only thing that this is doing is the area outlined in red, which is the outline of the overlay district as it exists today. That would be the area that we're dealing with, with this zoning amendment, but only that area. So we are changing the zoning in the area outlined by red.
Yeah.
So I, I have one question when it comes to.
I think that is the zoning that's there now, that's voluntary, but we're going to change it to be obligatory.
Right, it's, it's exactly the outline of the.
Unchanged.
Commercial overlay district as it exists today, which is voluntary zoning. You get some perks if you, you know, opt into it. But, so we're not changing that boundary by this action. All we're doing is we're taking the voluntary Village Overlay District and making it the official zoning.
So I have one question if I could. We show filling station as not permitted.
Right.
Is there anything that is a, is there, so realizing that there were two filling stations in it already.
Their grandfather.
I understand that they're grandfather. No, and I get that. I was trying to, I'm just trying to visualize. There isn't something, there isn't another piece of property there that.
Could become a gas station?
Or that was in the past.
That might have been.
More than two years ago.
That might be one down by.
I'm trying to, I'm trying to figure out how far.
Down by the, no, before you get to Moss Hill.
If we're only talking two years, then, yeah.
Answer my question at this time.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, nearly gas stations, I mean, I've been coming to Harwich since 1981.
Yep.
Nearly two gas stations, you know.
I'm just trying to, I'm trying to picture that district in total and I, I don't recall one. The reason why I ask is because obviously it's difficult to, to do anything on a gas station, once it's been a gas station. once it's been a gas station.
You know, where, do you know where the...
Presently, no. And that, it happens all over the Cape.
You know where the pet and dog supply store is there?
Yeah.
There was a gas station there years ago. And he actually moved out to, he's no longer a gas station, but he, Hemian was his name.
Yep, Hemian's Garage.
Yeah, he moved it out...
Queen Anne.
To Queen Anne Road.
Queen Anne.
And there was another one likely as not, just across the street from George's Fish Store. That's now a, a car dealership, I think, or what, it's a repair plant.
Okay, that's outside of this district.
But that's, that's long gone.
That's outside, right, no, I was just, I was specifically just asking, I was trying to visualize the district itself. And I didn't think there was anything besides AmeriGas and, and Cumberland Farms as it is currently structured.
Was that Hemian's father that did that?
No, so I...
I think it was Hemian's father.
I think, having said that, the only, the only question that we have is a couple of question marks, which are single family, with Ally back. Single family with, um, single family period and single family dwelling with accessory apartment. Yes?
Yeah, I had a question related to, to the boundary of, of the...
Okay.
Overlay Village, Commercial Overlay Village.
Excuse me?
We are keeping the same boundary rather than trying to change it now in the event...
Right.
So in the event the town in the future decides it wants to expand that, it would have to go through the process to expand it.
Right.
Rather than us trying to guess where it might best go.
You're 100% correct, David. And let, let me tell you the context that we should be looking this, at this in. Back before David Spitz left, we had begun a process of looking at the zoning on Route 28 from Chatham to Dennisport. I think at some point, we need to go back to doing that. At that point, in my mind, that would be the time to take a look at whether or not these types of boundaries should be changed. Because we would be doing it in the context of a complete Route 28 corridor study. At this time, I think our, or my concern i- is anyhow, to get this into place so that we are not faced with the same issue we were faced with on Cumberland Farms, on some of the existing vacant properties that exist in Harwichport.
If we were to try to expand it now, it might reduce its potential likelihood of it passing in town meeting.
It would raise additional issues, that's correct. And I think we want to raise those additional issues in the context of a complete Route 28 study as opposed to just formalizing this in Harwichport.
This is simply changing, this is simply making permitting, making, making law what was optional before.
Right, making the, basically the, the concept of the Village Overlay District, instead of just being an overlay district, it now becomes the underlying zoning in this area.
Yeah, that's all we're doing. And right now, the only question is, single family with accessory apartment?
I'll just have a quick clarification, I'm sorry. So I'm looking in the code book at the Village Commercial Overlay District, and it's 200 feet back from Route 28, so it's not as far back as this red line is. I think when this map was created, they were just trying to identify where the actual village is. And I think that that's what that line is. But it really is 200 feet back from Route 28. And I can make copies of this map for you, so you can see each parcel individual. It splits some, yeah, it splits some parcels up.
Yep.
Um, yeah, so that's something to consider.
I just, I heard where somebody pulled 200 feet out as to how deep the property might want to be.
Ally, just for our discussion purposes today, does that essentially mean that the red line where it goes beyond the purple...
Yeah.
Should be right along the edge of the purple?
Correct, yep, it should be down farther.
So the only place that would be, that would make a change is in that wedge that went on the purple, the north of Route 28.
Yeah.
Okay.
So this is the only one that really, right here?
Yeah, it was in a little bit.
Okay, so it would be my opinion, Ally, if you could then make that change to conform with the current boundaries of the existing overlay district.
Yeah.
Even though it cre- splits some parcels in half.
Yeah, and again, you know, my sense is that, you know, let's keep within the existing overlay district for now.
Because if we start to change it, there will be...
Then we're going to raise a whole series of issues, which I think are better raised in the concept of a Route 28 corridor study.
Yeah, because inevitably, inevitably, there'll be one or two people that will fall in the middle, and they've... That's a problem we don't need to deal with, with, with what should be a relatively simple task.
Correct.
I see.
Okay. And Ally, do you want, you can, you can give us your opinion for the next meeting. For the two ques- there's only two question marks there, I think, three. Trailer and...
Only three.
Trailer and boat storage.
I guess the question is, why did you put question marks there?
Uh, because when Ally and I sat down to review this, we disagreed. As to whether or not it should be permitted...
You guess you want horses.
Uh, no, I don't want horses, I, yeah. But anyway, as to whether it should be permitted by right or permitted only by special permit.
Or permitted at all.
Or permitted at all, yeah. So that's why the question marks are there, and so our determination in that meeting was...
Bring it to the board.
To see what the rest of the board thought.
Yeah.
Why don't you put that down in a little memo for us, and we can debate that at the next meeting, how's that? Does that sound fair?
My only concern, Larry, is that if it's possible to determine those three question marks tonight...
Oh, that would be good.
And do, do the motion that, that Mary had suggested, then Ally can make the, the changes that we talked about tonight and move it on to the next step. Because if we're going to be getting this to the May town meeting...
We want it.
The time goes by very fast. We don't know how long it will be with the Board of Selectmen. We then have to come back and schedule a public hearing, have a public hearing, vote, and then get it on the warrant for, for town meeting. So if it's at all possible, now if, if we can't come to agreement on this tonight, then yes, let's have Ally do that. But I think if we can come to agreement tonight, it would be better to come to agreement than make the motion to allow Ally to proceed with the process.
David?
Yeah, I, I have a question as to whether or not quasi-public is, is a defined term. It's under Paragraph 2 in the Table of Use Regulations?
Okay, it's in the current zoning ordinance.
Yeah, but has it ever been defined?
Well, we're not going to be changing that in this...
Well, we may not be, but, but it raises, you know, a lot of times, people refer to a, a nonprofit as a quasi-public organization, which it is not. It's, it's a term that I think is...
But again, David, that's not something that we're going to deal with in, in this issue. I mean, that's, in the existing zoning ordinance, we would have to change that heading for all districts. And I'm not sure we want to get into that type of, the...
I was asking for a definition, not necessarily to change it.
I just quickly looked, and it's not in the definition section of the code.
Okay.
So, no, there's no definition in there.
Quasi-public, we'll run on a tone. Having said that, then...
I think Joe has a question.
Oh, Joe?
On, on these three question marks, you'd like us to address those?
If we can come to agree.
Can you tell us why?
I, well, okay, the, the three of them, let's take all three of them together. It's single family, single family, this accessory apartment, and trailer, houseboat, or boat storage. The issue, I think, here is how, you know, I don't think single family should be prohibited from this zone. But I think the intent of this is to create a village. Most villages are a little bit more dense in single-family development. And therefore, you know, we're allowing multifamily and mixed-use development and things of that nature. Again, I have no objection to single family, but I think we should be looking at that as something by special permit. As opposed to a...
We're talking about a residential use.
See, I agree with you. That I would be fine with as a matter of right, the single family or the, or with the accessory.
Me too.
Just because there are so few parcels left that could possibly be a single family that I wouldn't...
Well, I think if, if you're looking at the downtown, if you're looking at the village use, you're probably looking at a little higher use than it. I mean, they're relatively small lots. If you put, put it in by a special permit with an accessory apartment, because, you know, the land is worth more. I mean, I, I would...
Well, there are a bunch of them already when you get beyond Bank Street.
Right.
Goes up to Freeman.
Right.
So...
So, I mean, those that would be allowed would be grandfathered in, I mean...
Economically, I think it's unlikely it's going to happen.
You see, David, I disagree with you. Take a look at what's happening on Main Street in Chatham. On the far end of Main Street, they're building, you know, 10 and 15-room houses right on Main Street.
On the far end, I know where he's talking about.
Yeah, going, yeah.
Down by the old gas station.
Down toward the lighthouse.
Down, you have to get annoyed, though.
The parking lot and the old El Ridge Gas Station and all.
It's across from the old Cranberry Inn.
Yeah, I mean, they're, they're building, you know, these sort of mini mansions right on Main Street in that area.
The beauty of, the beauty of a sewer system.
Right, and, and, you know, it's quite possible, there are two areas I can think of that may be prime for somebody who wants to build something of that, that nature. One is that big open lot next to, is it Heather's Airport or something like that? And then the smaller lot, which is currently a parking lot for a group of condos on the, on the back street. That's next to the real estate office.
What happened, the proposal that was brought before the board a couple of times to that spot just west of Heather's Airport?
I have no idea.
What's his name owns that now?
Oh, yeah, that, that's...
The guy that just bought a whole bunch of stuff down there?
They're still, they're still debating. I think he's still trying to put something together, and, and as a matter of interest, the, uh, the building in front of the old Dino's, the proposed multi-use building, they've, they are having some difficulties with handicapped access.
Accessible elevator.
Elevator. They receive a variance.
Well, they did?
A few days ago, yeah.
From the state?
Mm-hmm.
Now, are they still going to build the building up on the street?
They are.
Me too.
I don't, the state gave them a variance?
That's what the building commissioner told me yesterday or the day before.
The state or, or the zoning board of appeals?
The access board, which I believe is the state.
Architectural access board.
Architectural access board.
But that is the state.
That's the state.
Yeah.
It's probably based on the determination that the number of units was less than what the architectural access...
Still surprising from them.
Yeah, I, I, I agree with you, having dealt with them in previous life.
Dealing with them on multiple occasions.
You're talking about the, the residential units upstairs?
Yeah.
Correct. They wanted...
I mean, the, the, the commercial are all on the main level, so they'll all be accessible.
They wanted, yeah, the requirement is to, because there's that loft piece that they had applied for. And so they wanted the elevator to be accessible to the loft as well, and so they were...
The access board?
Yes, that's the requirement. And so they received a variance to not have that. I'm, I believe that's what the variance was. He just told me a variance, so I assume that that's what they...
By the way, when they get it all built and they number those parking spaces, there's going to be some come to Jesus in downtown Harwichport, I'll tell you.
Okay, but that...
You go by that any given day, and it's, it's loaded with cars.
They've taken out...
I know, but you also have the town parking lot across the street.
Oh, I know that, oh, I know that.
Except in the middle of the summer, it's empty most of the time.
Yeah, no, 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 I agree.
Uh, but anyway, um...
Anyhow, so we're back, back to, we digress, but back to single-family dwelling. Is the general feeling we should have single-family dwelling?
I think so.
I agree that there should be single-family dwelling. I think to require a special permit for a residential structure, a single-family residential structure, I, I just don't think... It takes so much to get these approved by town meeting to outlaw a single family, or not outlaw, but to require a special permit for a single family. I, I think we want to encourage, I understand the walkable feel, I can see your point, definitely. But I think it's important to have that mix.
What about, all right, if, if, let's, let's say that, that continues on as permitted. A trailer, houseboat, or boat storage?
So I just want to point out, because this is a clarification, so the paragraph, the use, it says residential uses. There is a section for boat storage under commercial uses, which is what you think of as boat storage. You're storing a bunch of boats there. This is someone wants to put their boat that they take out of the harbor in their yard. That's what that kind of boat storage is, so it's different.
Whoops.
You're right, but it's diff- or, yeah, or it's on your trailer to go in. It...
This isn't Alan Harbor putting in a, putting in a new lot. This is...
Correct. This is your everyday...
This is a residential use with an accessory use as boat storage. So no different than me parking a boat in my driveway for the winter.
Boat storage in the commercial, if I believe I'm correct.
Except it looks like, I don't disagree.
It's under, it's under commercial boat storage.
Yep, and we say, no, not allowed. Because we don't want to promote that in that village area. So that's...
The dash.
Yeah.
So there's no boat storage in the commercial area?
There's no commercial boat storage in the commercial area.
It's if you built a McMansion on, on, in Harwichport Main Street, you could store your personal boat in your yard.
A 48-foot personal boat.
Yeah, this kind of relates to my question.
Because it's already there.
Are we, are we going to ask for, under the resident, single-family residential, any changes into the front, side yard requirements?
So we do have that on the last page of your document on area regulations. And we do talk about the side yard setbacks. And again, there's those question marks, because we weren't sure what the board wanted to do with the single-family dwelling or the accessory apartment. But we're recommending that it's zero to 10 for the front, and then the side is zero, and then the rear is 10. So does everyone kind of see that and understand?
Well, I'm, I'm, I'm just wondering, in that context...
Do you want a boat?
If somebody puts a, a, a home in that is 10 feet back from the street with a zero side yard, and they want to put a boat in the front...
Right, yep.
Got it.
So this will, this will change it to zero side yards?
Mm-hmm.
It doesn't mean you have to comply with that, but you, you can have a zero side yard.
I understand. And, and we had, what, 10 before?
No, that would, that would be the minimum, Joe. Because as you see, under the zero, it says minimum.
I'm with you, huh?
I'm going to check real quick and see what's allowed in the Commercial Village.
But it has a max of 10.
Right, which is...
So that, so to your point, it's, it's a small boat that's fitting in a 10-foot size, side yard.
10 by 50.
So the Commercial Village right now is 20.
I have a hard time saying, no, you can't put your own boat in your own driveway.
Right, but...
But, but maybe that's by special permit, saying, so that you, we have a little control?
I have two of them there right now.
Well, maybe that's by special permit, so that you have a right to decide where it goes. But I, I do tend to think residential should just be, should just be as a...
My sense is that if we are allowing the single family and the single family with accessory apartment by right, then we need to allow the boat storage related to that dwelling by right. Just like it is in the rest of the town.
And on the side yard, I think there should be a 10-foot side yard.
So that's what, in the Village Commercial Overlay, it's 10-foot side yard right now. In the CV, which is the underlying district, it's 20. But when you put that overlay district on top, it's 10.
Okay, what about residential?
So it says... So it doesn't distinguish between either. It just says, when you're in this, the side lot line setback shall be 10 feet.
So the zero to 10 is a change.
Yeah.
Now, Ally, if I remember our discussion, and I don't see the wording here, but maybe someplace else, that with regard to... that with regard to these dimensional requirements, that the planning board would have the right to consider a waiver on, you know, if a waiver was requested.
For the thirty-foot height limit, for example?
For any of the dimensional requirements.
Any of the dimension, yeah, height setback.
I'll have to make sure that's in there.
Okay, yeah, because I remember.
But I thought we had discussed and I thought it was somewhere, but I can't.
Yeah, I thought it was somewhere too, but if you could just double check, because that was clearly the intent. These would be the, the guidelines and the zoning. But if somebody came in and wanted to do a presentation to us and wanted something slightly different, we would have the right to waive those dimensional requirements.
Grant them a waiver.
So, should we clarify that before we take a vote, a vote to recommend it to, to the board of selectmen?
Well, we, we need to make sure that's incorporated.
Right, that's what I mean, so we should.
Yeah, I don't think it is, so I'll.
Okay, well, then, it sounds like what you're saying, Mary, which I think is fine is, Ally, if you could go back and make the revisions that we have talked about tonight and then bring it back to the next meeting and at the next meeting, we could, you know, have the motion for the consensus to allow you to move forward.
So, did we make a determination on the single family and accessory apartment?
Yeah, I guess the consensus of the board is that it should be permitted, am I right?
I think so.
It would appear that way.
It's, I mean, I think I'm the only one that would rather that by special permit, so I'm kind of in the minority.
No, there's, there's two of us, but I, I, I can understand, I can understand that a single family in the town, that so be it, but.
Are we saying this?
What a front community, you know?
Are we saying that the single family with accessory apartment is a special permit or is it, it's also permitted?
I think it has to be a special permit, because that's what's required.
For the accessory apartment, yeah.
Yeah, for accessory apartments.
Okay.
I think we just put a question mark there, because if we don't have a single family house, you're not gonna have a single family house with it.
Okay, so then, the single family would be permitted by right. The accessory apartment would be a special permit and then the boat storage would be a by right? Or, or is that gonna be by special permit?
I think it should be by right.
I mean, my feeling is if we're allowing the single family, then we should allow the boat storage. You know, and if that's allowed by right, then we should allow somebody by right to store their boat on their property.
Yeah, you'll probably get a lot of pushback at the time of meeting.
I agree with you on that, I think so too.
Yeah.
Because too many people have one.
Yeah, and it's allowed throughout the rest of the town.
I mean, if you think about it for a minute, our problem boating-wise in this town is we don't have enough slips and moorings. And, and we're never gonna have enough, never gonna have enough slips and moorings and we're probably never gonna have very many more, the, the way it's, it's set up. It just, I mean, the, Sacotacatagua's gonna look a lot different when it's all done, but I don't think that'll affect any moorings.
That being said, if it's a, if it becomes a Mc, if the single family dwelling becomes a McMansion, it is likely gonna end up in, in a private yacht club someplace, but, you know.
I don't.
If it's a regular, single family home, I don't think it would.
A twenty thousand square foot lot in a busy area, a McMansion, yeah.
May not happen.
Okay, so you can make those changes, Ally, bring it back and then we can, then we can refer it to the board of selectmen.
Is there any other comments?
Why, did you wanna go through all of them and see if we agree with the P and the S?
Already went through them, do you agree with them?
Why, didn't know if you wanted to do that.
Well, no, I mean.
You're happy, huh, boss?
Ally passed this out, you know, sent this out to all of us, so I'm assuming that everybody's gone through it.
If anybody had any.
And if anybody has any issues with any of them, then yes, bring it up now.
And you'll have a second pass next meeting too, so if you haven't, no problem, let's do it before next meeting.
It would be great if you could get it out to us before next meeting.
I, I don't notice anything here from marijuana sales.
They're gonna be banned, Larry.
Oh, I don't see it on here.
We'll see though.
So, they'll go next door to Dennis and buy it there.
A hundred and, a hundred and twenty communities in the Commonwealth have banned it. You know, it'll probably happen at the next state election.
Of course it is.
Okay, but that wasn't on the agenda, so I think we need to move on.
No, okay, I was just being facetious. Okay, you've moved that on, so the next item on the agenda would be discussion of the local comprehensive plan.
Yes.
Go ahead, Jim.
Ally, Larry, if I could just have the floor for a minute.
Feel free.
Ally, I know that you had requested a certain amount of funding in order for us to hire a consultant to do the comprehensive plan. Have you gotten any sense as to where that request stands as of right now?
I have not gotten any feedback. Currently, I did make the presentation to the, a capital outlay committee and they just take the presentation and I think they discuss it later in time, so no, I have not got any.
Yeah, we haven't, we, we're only about halfway through our agenda, I was gonna report this anyway. In, in capital outlay and, and we haven't voted on, on anything yet.
Okay, so anyway, so we don't know whether or not we're going to have any funds at all to hire a consultant. In light of that, what I had thought and why I had asked Ally to put this on the agenda was, we're going to have to do a comprehensive plan no matter what happens with the funding. What happens with the funding is going to be, make a big determination as to how we do it, what our resources are, et cetera, in getting it done, but I, it's my feeling that at this point, while we're waiting to find out whether or not we're going to get funding to hire a consultant, which even if we get it, would not be spendable until after July first of next year, that it would be helpful to sort of start structuring a subcommittee of this board, which I would recommend be no more than two members of the board, plus Ally's assistance on that subcommittee, to sort of start going through and thinking through the procedure and how we actually do a comprehensive plan. And what are some of the things we need to consider? Is the plan something we sort of start taking a look at from scratch? Do we pull together other documents that have been considered plans for certain areas, like the housing plan that we approved, the conservation and recreation plan that we approved? Instead of start thinking through and sort of develop an outline for what would be considered a comprehensive planning process for the town of Howard. So, it's my sense that that's something that we really need to start thinking about pretty soon. Again, my recommendation would be to put together a subcommittee who would work with Ally in order to start structuring that, of course, that subcommittee would always report back to this board, but I would like the sort of comments of the full board as to whether or not they think that's a good idea and if so, a consensus of the board, whether or not we should move ahead and start and actually form that subcommittee.
Mary.
I think it's a great idea, my only concern is that I think it's a lot of work for two people.
Well, you've got plenty of time.
I think it's a lot of work for two people, I really do.
On that count, Joe, before you, before you, my sense, I, I've worked on various subcommittees regarding to the planning board and at least at this stage, in the early stages of thinking through how we do it, I don't think it's as much work as you might think. Yes, when we get into the actual work on the plan, but that's the point in time where we're hoping to have a consultant who will do most of the actual day-to-day work on it for us, under the direction of the subcommittee. And if that's not true, then yes, we have to rethink that.
My two cents, that's all.
Yeah, no, it's a very valid point, Mary, I mean, it's a very good point and one that I think needs to be considered. So, what I'm suggesting is that we begin with the subcommittee with, you know, two members of the board and that as we proceed, we may wanna expand that, we may wanna bring in others, other people from other committees, et cetera.
Joe.
If my memory's any good, and it's not that good, if we go back to when we last did a comprehensive plan, seems to me we hired somebody to, to, to do it and then we started working on it after they did like a draft, as opposed to our sort of setting out the parameters that we want them to perform it. Now, that's just my.
I think, I think.
Memory, I guess.
Dancing between the two ideas, I think, do we let the consultant lead us or do we leave the consultant? And anyhow, if we wait for the consultant, that's gonna be, before they get going, before we choose one, you're looking at about a year from now anyhow.
Right.
But having said that, we'll move right on to David.
Yeah, I, in my last thirty years of work, I work with committees almost full-time and what I've found is that committees very seldom create anything, but they react to things very well. So, it's always good to give the committee something to start from as a straw man, for them to react to and put flesh on and so on. The other thing is, is that it's very difficult to achieve any kind of meaningful consensus with two people, because you get a disagreement, there isn't any majority.
So, one-to-one vote.
That's right, and, and that doesn't mean everybody always gets what they want, but I think it's better to have three people, so you can say at least two people agree and that comes forward to the full board for consideration, but it was just a couple of thoughts.
Okay, two thoughts on the comments that Joe and David made. When, Joe, I wasn't here when the last plan was done, so I, I have no idea how that procedure went.
Spitz was very involved with it.
Yeah, no, I know David was, and I know the, the then-current chairman of the planning board was very involved.
Was that Angelo?
No, no, no.
Mr. McCaffrey.
That was.
Oh, that Matthew, yeah, yeah.
That was Matt, yeah. Ally has provided, you know, has provided us with both that plan and the previous plan. In my opinion, the last plan that was done wasn't a true comprehensive plan. The previous plan, you know, which is.
Was closer to it.
Was closer to the concept of the comprehensive plan, but now it's severely outdated. So, you know, and as Larry pointed out, if we wait until we get a consultant on board, we're talking about at least a year before we even begin thinking about it. And with regard to David's point, the only concern I have about that, having worked on various subcommittees of the planning board, is that, you know, these are going to be extra meetings for everybody on that, on that committee and maybe in the beginning, we're only meeting once a month or twice a month, something like that. There are also extra meetings for Ally. It's hard enough to get together two people, yet to try to juggle the schedule of three people, you know, with regard to meeting times and places and as we get further into the process and starting, start talking more about substance, we're going to have to be concerned about public input. All meetings that the subcommittee would have, would have to be public meetings, they would have to be advertised, they would have to be noticed. In the past, various subcommittees I've been on on this planning board has taken a lot of criticism for having certain subcommittee meetings during the daytime because of the availability of, of people from the public to come in and comment. That may not be a problem with this committee in the very beginning, because we'd be talking more about, you know, the process and the administration as opposed to the substance. It becomes more of a problem, you know, as we evolve into substantive discussions.
One of the main things that I think that, at the initial stages, is to identify what we would need a consultant to do. What's the scope of work that we're gonna ask that consultant to carry out?
Well, that clearly will be part of it and I would see that this subcommittee would be the main one in assisting Ally in getting out the RFP and reviewing consultant proposals.
One, one of our problems the last time around was we got to a certain point and then we went head-on with the good folks from.
East Howard.
East Howard.
And was that on the comprehensive plan process?
Well, they, they.
No, it was the East Howard plan.
Yeah, that, on the East Howard process.
This is gonna be a lot less conversational than I would hope.
On that, sure, David, I wouldn't guarantee that. I would hope you're right, but I don't expect it to be.
Depends on how deep into the weeds we wanna get, of course.
Well, that's going to be an issue that the committee would have to look at.
Mary.
My only last thought is from a practical standpoint on the two versus three. Your quorum is gonna be two people regardless of whether you have two or three. It's just, you'd need two of three versus two of two when it comes to your, your notice meetings. So, that's my only other, other thought for you to consider on that and, and having no, no skin in the game either way, just, to your point, yes, it is hard to juggle schedules, but at least two of three is all you'd really need to keep you moving forward, as opposed to two or two. And again, just food for thought, no.
Get another brain involved too.
Decision either way, right, and, I mean, no, no preference either way, just.
Of course, we get your brain, which is.
Knowing how difficult quorums can be.
Yeah, and I wasn't as concerned about the quorum issue, Mary. I mean, the issue that I thought David brought up was the ability to make decisions.
Well, and, and that, there is that too.
And.
You'd need two votes either way.
Yeah, well, well, my, my thought on the being able to make decisions is, in the early stages of this, we're just going to be more brainstorming than anything else and then to the extent that there are decisions to be made, those decisions would have to come back to the full board. And that this committee would may brainstorm and may have recommendations, but that, you know, and I don't really see the need for that coming about until we've sort of.
Several months in the process.
Yeah, several months into the process where we've brainstormed enough to the point where we may have an outline, we may have an outline of a procedure, we may have a scope of work for a consultant, if we're lucky enough to get funding for a consultant and those are the times where there may be real decisions that need to be made.
And, and, and looking at the budget for next year for the town of Howard, I don't know how much, if any, money will be available. Although, you know, for this board to complete a comprehensive plan on its own or for Ally to do it and us to give it a, put an input matter on the front page, that'll be a challenge.
Well, Larry, to speak to that, in the discussion, when David Spitz had announced his resignation and there were determinations as to how to proceed with the planning department, there was extensive discussions with the town administrator with regard to the comprehensive planning process and whether that would be done in-house or whether that would be done with a consultant. And the opinion both of David and myself, who were involved in those discussions, and I think it was Chris's opinion also, that if we were to do that in-house, it really meant that we needed to have an extra person in the planning department. The determination on the planning department was not to do that and the determination that, it was my understanding, was Chris's determination, was that we would do the comprehensive plan through a consultant. And that we would not have an extra staff person within the planning department, but we would have consultant assistance in doing the comprehensive plan. Now, again, that wasn't a final decision and it's nothing anybody can be held to and the reality of today's financial situation for the town, you know, as Joe and you have stated, may dictate whether or not we get anything or how much we get, but I think we need to proceed in our planning that we will end up getting something.
Excuse me.
Okay, that, I think that's good, I didn't realize that, but that's a good way to look at it. So, it's a question of, of two or three, you know?
And.
I think, I think initially, two might work, three, then you're juggling schedules. With two, it's much easier.
That's a just, my comments are food for thought, that's all.
Three new members of the planning board.
Are you still?
Okay.
So, I guess the, the question.
Up to the jammer.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
I think the chairman has to appoint.
Uh, so, I mean, if the planning board is ready to proceed, uh, you know, in this direction and establish the subcommittee, uh, you know, then again, I think you're correct, it's up to the chairman of the planning board to appoint.
We can also, I could put it on the agenda for next time as well so that the board members can think about it more. We are just throwing this at you now, so.
Let, let me just, I, I, I mean, what is the consensus of the board? I mean, my feeling is I would like to, if the board is in agreement, you know, proceed or get that consensus statement tonight. Whether or not we appoint the board member of the subcommittee tonight, we could do that at the next meeting. Uh, but I think I would like, it, it might be helpful if we just find out whether the members of the board are in agreement to proceed in this direction.
I'd defer to Larry's judgment, whatever he chooses.
I think I'd agree with Jim, that, you know, we could, we can debate that, but if, if we like the concept of the committee to start the process going, um, that's fine. And then we can poll and see who's interested in it during the, during the course of the week and, and, uh, over the next two weeks. And we can also, which is, uh, we can also consider, um, the next item I was going to bring up, we'll probably have another board member by the next meeting.
What is that a vacancy situation? I've seen.
Right, right now, we have, um, Tom was, um, voted, his, his appointment was rescinded at the last Board of Selectmen meeting.
So, we have a full-time member vacancy?
We have one full-time member vacancy and two alternate member vacancies. Having said that, um, I was also requested by the Board of Selectmen to provide an attendance roster that Ally made out since I don't keep attendance. Um, so they got their, they get their attendance roster as to other people. I, I have no idea what the Board of Selectmen is gonna do, they wanted that. I know they're working through all the boards in the town, I have no idea what their endgame is. Um, but I, I, I do know that by the next meeting, from what I understand, we will have one more board, board member who, um, I won't even bring that up, but he's, um, in all probability, he, he's a, he's a, an engineer with corporate experience. So, we're certainly not gonna announce the, the member before the, um, board has made their selection, but.
They have applicants, you're, you're telling me.
We, he, he's, he's an applicant, yes. Um, and I'm told by the Board of Selectmen, there, there is at least one more applicant for the planning board and, and possibly two. So, by the next meeting, we will, we will have another member, um, sitting on the board.
That's, you know, that's, that's interesting because they're having an awful lot of problems getting people to volunteer for other committees and boards in town.
I know that.
Oh, it's very serious. Um, and I, when it gets to my turn on the briefings and reports, I will speak.
Sure.
To that issue with one other board.
So, yeah, I, that's, that's what I, what I brought up. I've been, um, working with, with Julie on the Board of Selectmen for questions she's had about the planning board and attendance and, um, having, having gone to the Board of Selectmen meeting, but, uh, from what I understand, they wanna bring them up to full membership. And that will happen in the fullness of time. However, we'll, we'll move right on to briefing then.
Okay.
Go right ahead.
Okay, well, let me start off. The Community Preservation Committee has finally been able to get a quorum to have a meeting. Uh, this is only the second time in five months that they've been able to have a quorum. Due to the fact that there are three vacant seats, so that mean, on a nine-person board, so that means when we have more than one person absent, we cannot get a quorum.
I don't wanna be a wise guy, what does Community Preservation charge with?
With, uh, voting on the allocation of the Community Preservation Fund.
Oh, that, oh, that board, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know their official.
Relatively critical.
Oh, I know who that, I know who it is.
Yeah, okay. So, anyway, luckily, there was a quorum at the meeting last night. And at last night's meeting, um, well, all the applications for Community Preservation Funds have been submitted in accordance with the deadline. There are sixteen applications. The, the total amount requested through those applications is far in excess of the funds that are going to be available. The Community Preservation Committee will be holding meetings in order, with the applicants, to review each individual, individual application over the months of November and December. The current dates for those meetings are November ninth, November thirtieth, December seventh, and December fourteenth. There, it, the concept is going to be generally to review four applications per meeting. Since there are sixteen applications and four meetings scheduled, that's to get us through all the applications. Um, then in January, the committee will meet in order to deliberate and, uh, we will probably have two meetings during the month of January. The dates have not as yet been set for those two meetings. Uh, and deliberate, discuss with a vote either at the first meeting if possible, if not at the second meeting in January.
To allocate the money.
To allocate, to actually allocate the money and make recommendations to the Board of Selectmen to put these items on the warrant for town meeting.
So, you don't do it at the same time as the presentation?
No, the presentations are going to occur during November and December. And then what happens is after all the presentations are completed, then the committee gets together and reviews and has a discussion among themselves with regard to all of the applications and makes a determination which ones get approved for recommendation to go to town meeting. It has not as yet been determined since our meeting was only last night as to which application will be discussed at which meeting. However, there will be public notices and those public notices will indicate the applications to be discussed on each date. Just as a sort of heads up, uh, it appears as if we will be starting with the applications for historic funding, uh, you know, in November, since there are six items requesting historic funding. So, I, it, my guess is that the majority of those will be discussed November ninth, but again, there will be a public notice and a listing of which applications will be discussed at which date.
And to follow up on that, you should have received the letter from the Historic Commission on its opinions on those applications. So, they all came before us in September, thanks to Ally. So, um, we've, we have taken action on everything that came before us.
They did.
To date, so.
That, that's very helpful.
Just as a point of information.
That's very helpful, Mary, because that was a big issue in some previous rounds.
Understood, so.
And we really appreciate your effort in getting that done.
Uh, it is all thanks to.
And Ally is.
Ally is having shepherded the process through the administration and the department heads, so, uh, the thanks go to Ally for, for getting those on our agenda in a timely fashion.
That should be very helpful in the review of those applications.
Yeah, so all the applicants have received the historic letter, um, and I also sent a copy to the Chair of CPC, so.
Oh, good, thank you.
Okay, and you wanna jump in with that report? Was, was that effectively the report?
That was effectively the report. Any of the, uh, any of the historic applications that came before us were reported on. We don't have anything else before us at this time.
And they're reported out.
The historic district is livening again.
Livening.
Okay, Joe.
In the list.
As you know, I'm, I'm on Capital Outlay. We're about halfway through, uh, the various departments. Everybody wants something. Uh, and, and we're, we're, as I say, we're about halfway through the, the departments in town, uh, and we still have to have some more presentations and then we'll vote to allocate the funds. Uh, it's, it's worked out. We, we lost our chairman for a short time, he had to go away or something, and, but he's back and, and rocking and rolling. He also, matter of interest, resigned from the Finance Committee. So, he's just doing that. Uh, I'm also on the East Howardwich Fire Station Building Committee. And, uh, I don't know if I'm there from the planning board or how I'm there, but I'm there. Uh, and, um, you would, I think, be interested in the fact that, uh, we started out with the, actually a commitment from the fire chief that would, it would not exceed four million dollars. Well, essentially what happened was, we, we hired a, we got some money from the town, we hired an architectural firm who are specialists, have done a bunch of other firehouses and stuff, and, uh, they essentially showed us what they could do for four million dollars and the answer is, uh, it was, not very much. So, that's why we're at six million dollars. Uh, and we'll see how it goes and if we, we get it. But essentially, the discussion is that we will build a new East Howardwich Fire Station, tear down the one that's there, and the new one will be, uh, will open onto thirty-nine actually, on that side of the lot, not, not over where the other station is, but over on the thirty-nine set, side of the lot, is the last presentation that we had. Uh, it's, it's not a Taj Mahal, let me say this to you, but it, it accomplishes what we need and of course, the, the consensus is that any growth in this town is gonna happen on that side of town. Uh, and the, the combination of the emergency room at Fontaine, uh, and, uh, and the population over there, uh, has most of the, uh, ambulance runs. That's one of the things that they now, they now permanently station an ambulance over there because there's so many runs.
Not surprising.
Yeah. So, uh, anyway, that's, that's how we got from four to six. And, uh, uh, I, I think Larry will approve it. Now, we'll see, you know, 'cause it, it would be bonded. Uh, initially, the chairman of the Board of Selectmen wasn't too excited about six million dollars, but I think he's, I think he's learning.
How much is that a square foot, dare I ask?
Uh, four hundred and something.
Too bad we can't modularize it.
Yeah, it's four hundred and something. And, and the issue, uh, is, they tell, tell us, is that, uh, these folks have all kinds of work, that, 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 that they have all kinds of, of.
They're busy so they can get the money.
Yeah, work available, so they, the price, the price of goes, goes up when that happens. Yeah.
Uh, Joe, if the new entrance to the fire station is gonna be on Route thirty-nine instead of one thirty-seven, what's gonna happen with that park that was there? Because in my recollection.
Well, as you, as you look from thirty-nine.
Yeah.
It's gonna be over to the right. The park will pretty much stay there.
Okay, so it's not going, the entrance is not going to intrude on the park?
That's my understanding.
Okay.
Okay. David, any? No updates? How's your golf game?
Depends.
One.
Sometimes it's better than other.
One interesting, one interesting, I, I am not on the Sacra Tucket Harbor Committee anymore because it's been disbanded. But from what I understand, uh, at the meeting on Monday, at the Board of Selectmen meeting on Monday night, um, it was brought up that there is a potential, um, correct me if I'm wrong, Ally, but there's a potential, um, person that's interested in a hundred-seat restaurant that's. That is willing to pay for the upgrade to the septic system and to outfit the.
I have to be careful because that person is a client of mine.
Well, they'll have to come back to the board.
More than have to.
But what basically he's talking about, and we'll see what they do with it, and please, no public statements about this, but basically what he's talking about is.
We're being recorded, Jim.
I don't think I wanna make any further comment.
Okay.
If you're interested, I'll tell you after the meeting.
Okay. Um, having said that, um, they're looking at that and you can look at that on the Board of Selectmen tape, from what I understand.
I saw that.
Yeah, he brought it up, uh, Chris brought it up the other night.
Yeah. And, um, having said that, I don't think there's anything.
Oh, sure, John.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, a lot of discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Carried, thank you very much.